All right, well, good morning, everyone. And our light is on. So welcome to the General Government Subcommittee. Today is Thursday, May 1st, 2025, at about 8:03 in the morning. So I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting. And the very first thing we're going to do is go to the public testimony on House Bill 5016. House Bill 5016 is the budget bill for the legislative branch. So we're going to open that. And if we could have, I guess, our first person is Representative Gamba. Okay, great. That's perfect. Okay. Welcome, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Gorsuch, members of the committee. For the record, my name's Mark Gamba, House District 41. It's interesting, we have these moments, we have these bills that, in some ways, seem really small and insignificant, and in other ways are actually kind of pivotal. And I kind of want to draw the picture of the way that my vast experience of two and a half years has led me to understand, and that is that a great deal of the policy that comes out of this building comes from lobbyists. And we have structural reasons why that is the case, I would argue. One is that we are an amateur legislature. We're not paid full-time to do this job. Most people can't do this job full-time. They have to have a second job. And then we are afforded enough to have one individual staffer for the full two years that we do this work. And I wanted to give you a sense of what that individual staffer is responsible for. In my office, over the last two and a half years, we've had 6,973 individual constituent responses. We've had 167 cases where my team has been advocating with an agency for folks, for constituents, taken over 2,000 phone calls, scheduled countless meetings. And I kept my LA-2 during the last interim by fundraising and employing her through my PAC. She did absolutely zero campaign work for me, other than helping me fundraise sometimes. All of the money that I raised was in order to employ her so that she could help run a really critical work group that we had on transmission. Eighteen months, 80 members in that transmission work group, very disparate views. Most of the valuable meetings were one-off meetings with each one of those people more than once. And then, obviously, several group meetings. That's the kind of work that I believe legislatures should be doing in order to arrive at policy that doesn't specifically benefit one entity or another entity. It benefits the state of Oregon. And when you have policy written by lobbyists, it is meant to benefit their particular world, whomever that is. And we may agree with the thing they're trying to do, and often do. But the point I'm making is that it's not driven, the work, the details, the digging, is not driven by the people in this building who the voters believe they have elected us to do that work. And one of the things we could do to ensure that that work is done by our offices more often is to have sufficient staff so that we can have people doing the day-to-day work of just keeping a legislative office functioning, and we can have people who can commit themselves to particular policy areas and dig deep and do that hard work. Without that, we have to go to extraordinary measures like fundraising for our PAC, which is a little weird. So I just think this is one of those pivotal moments where Oregon could begin to move the needle forward so that we are beginning to solve the really serious problems, and God knows we have a long list of really serious problems, that we keep seeming not to solve. And I would offer that one of the ways we could do that is by ensuring that we are well-staffed all the time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Senator Patterson. And since we do have a lot of people who would like to speak to us, if we could hold it to two minutes.
Senator Przazanski.
Oh, yeah. So please introduce yourself for the record and choose who's going to go first.
My senior colleague was here before me.
Did she call you a senior colleague?
She did. And I wear that proudly.
There you go.
All right.
All right. So if we could go about two minutes.
Yeah. Co-Chair Gorsuch, and members of the committee, good morning. My name's Deb Patterson, State Senator for District 10, which is south and west Salem, one with an independence. I represent approximately 143,000 residents of this district. The district includes students and working families, veterans, and a lot of retirees. Growing numbers, as I said, are seniors with issues related to affordable, accessible housing, accessing healthcare. There's currently a very long wait for people newly retired or new to the area who are seeking providers who take Medicare. And over 30,000 people were recently affected by the recent impasse between Salem Health and Regions Blue Cross Blue Shield. There are people who've been scammed by strangers. I've met with constituents who have loved ones with addiction issues or mental health issues who are seeking help. Folks have called with concerns about a wide range of state services. My phone is ringing a lot. My email is full, so is yours. Then there are folks who want to meet about changes to current legislation. We meet with lobbyists, community advocates, constituents. Then there are neighborhood association meetings, meetings with other community leaders, meeting with groups such as League of Women Voters, AAUW, Chambers of Commerce, city clubs, and more. You're there, too. Site visits to local nonprofits and businesses. If a state senator or representative is doing their job and wants to do it well, a great deal of the work of scheduling, communications, and arranging for meetings falls to our staff. We know the staff in this building. Like my staff, everyone's staff is hardworking, dedicated to doing a great job, and extremely capable, but there's a limit to the amount of work that they can be expected to carry. And the workload of being a chief of staff or a legislative assistant has grown tremendously. I'm old enough to remember office work before there were computers. And the amount of mail generated then was a trickle compared to what can be generated today. The amount of bills that need to be tracked has grown greatly, creating with it a greater amount of work for our staff and to allow legislators to stay on track with their committee assignments. You're in a committee right now, not at your desk taking care of other work. There is a fiscal to this ask, but I asked you to consider the cost to our staff with the increased workload they are experiencing now, and it's not going to get less. I urge your support for funding a second staff person year-round. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. My name's Floyd Przazanski, State Senator, District 4. And I guess I am the elder in the building here. I got seven years, I served in the House, 21 years now in the Senate. Over those years, I've seen, and I've always wondered, and I'll just put this out, this is not to be a division, but I just think it just shows the significance. The Senate has two House districts. We have twice as many constituents, and we have a lot of demand on our staff. And I think I can say easily for the House, it's the same. And we're never going to be at the full funding level that we really should have to run these offices. And so historically, we've always kept the office budgets to be the same for the House and Senate. I'm not here to say it should change. I think it should stay the same. I have no problem with that. But what I do see is that we need to allow both House members and Senate members to be able to fully represent their constituents. We know that the increase in work has, a lot of it distributed to us just moving forward in how we communicate. Having the ability to have virtual communication, our workload for our staff has increased significantly. It's more than just, it's much easier for our constituents, and it should be, to be able to contact us and reach out to us. I hope that we will look at this in a larger scenario as the demand that we have. I am blessed with my full FTE, Kevin Moore. He's been with me for 19 years. So he knows the ropes. He knows how to get stuff done, but he's taxed. And I know that all these other individuals who are serving us to help make certain our constituents are served are overtaxed as well. So I hope that we can, in fact, take that next step, as we've heard, and move forward and let us be able to fully represent our district and all of our constituents. And you've heard from two members already as to how special projects work. And I think it's really important, especially when you have individuals that are coming to us as constituents, that we can dedicate our staff to them and not rely on El Pro or others to do some of that work, because there's just not that connection. And so I hope that this committee will advance forward. Two FTE positions for all legislators, House and Senate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. We're going to go on to Senator Frederick. And also, let's see.
Rep. Javady.
Yes, Representative Javady, if you want to come up.
And Rep. the Senate of Nuno Stil.
Okay. So.
Hello, I'm Lou Frederick. I'm State Senator from District 22, north and northeast Portland. Hello, Chair and Committee. Good to see you. I have a feeling I'm just going to end up repeating what everyone else has said. The LA-2 positions are required in our situation, in our time. We have so much to do, so many things to do, and the complications are extraordinary. So it's important for us to acknowledge that and to recognize that we have to do something about it. And I think this is an attempt to do that. I support it as vigorously as I possibly can. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry for our vast Internet audience that can't see what's going on. The gavel has shifted over here, as the co-chair needs to be somewhere else. So let's continue. Representative Javady, we'd be pleased to hear from you now.
Thank you, Rep. Gamba. Members of the committee, my name is Cyrus Javady from House District 32, which is Oregon's northwest coast. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Like many rural districts, we face challenges that require timely direct engagement from erosion and fisheries to broadband, small business issues, and healthcare access. In addition to being a legislator, I work as a full-time dentist in the interim. During the session, I try to commit at least one day a week to the practice in Tillamook. I see patients regularly. For me and for many in the citizen legislature, a capable year-round legislative assistant isn't just a luxury. It's how we meet the needs of our constituents in real time. When constituents call, like we've heard, because their benefits have been cut, or because their road is crumbling, or because a state agency hasn't called them back in six weeks, they don't want to wait till February or till the following session. And they shouldn't have to. Maintaining funding so that every office can retain an LA-2 throughout this term is essential. Just a few statistics for House District 32. It's 3,000 square miles. So stretch that out, and that's traveling from LA to Maine. Within that 3,000 square miles, something unique about Tillamook County is there are 15 public schools in Clatsop County. There are 12 public schools in Tillamook County. There's two public schools in Clatsop. That's for a total of 39 schools. There are 13 incorporated cities, five in Clatsop County, seven in Tillamook County, one in Columbia County. There are approximately 61 unincorporated communities. In addition, there are four hospitals. There is one main road. There's poor cell service. When, the way that I utilize the staff is I have a chief of staff during session. I have a legislative assistant that's helping me in the building, and then I have a field representative that's up in the north part of the county. The nice thing is that most of those meetings are happening during the day, sometimes while I'm practicing in the interim. Some of those are happening at night. And being able to divide and conquer, especially when a lot of those meetings are meeting simultaneously, makes it possible for the community to have access to their state capital. Whether it's a school board that needs to get ahold of us, or a hospital, whether it's a local community cohonest event, no matter what it is, having a second version of me, even if it's a mini-me, located somewhere else in the district means a lot to the community. And it's one of the things I hear the most back from them is, we know you're in the minority, you can't do a lot, but what we do love is that when we need to get ahold of you, there's somebody that's picking up the phone and somebody that's at our meeting. And LA-2 continues to make that happen without having to overly stretch our budgets. Thank you.
Thank you both. Any questions? I'm not seeing any. I am seeing Representative Munoz and Nelson here. We'd like to invite you to come up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Missing Chair Gorsuch and missing Chair Smith. Chair Gamba, good morning.
We're fading fast up here.
Yes, you are. My name is Leslie Munoz, and I'm the State Representative for House District 22, which is Woodburn, Jervis, Brooks, and North Salem. It's a pleasure to be here today to speak on behalf of my staff. As you know, I'm a new legislator, and I've been stepping into this role, and I don't know how I would do it without the amazing staff that has been helping me. They are, as Representative Javady said, not a mini-me, but an extension of me, and I truly wouldn't have survived without them. For over a decade now, I've been representing workers across the state through their labor unions, making sure that they have good wages, benefits, and working conditions. And so it was very interesting to me, when I took this position on, to find out that one of the people that I get to manage, one of my staff, actually only has a half-time job. That's unsustainable for them. They have full-time bills 100% of the time, and I don't see how we're going to recruit and retain staff that's talented and experienced if they have to go find another job in the middle of the year. As a new legislator, I've been learning how our legislature operates. I've learned about the incredible work that our staff does to ensure that our offices engage with constituents to meet their needs. If they have questions, for example, they need to apply for unemployment, or not sure which, agency they need to contact to address a specific issue. Our office staff is there to provide that support. Despite the important work that our staff provides to constituents, we have limited staffing outside of the legislative session. Temporary session-only jobs can be stressful and cause anxiety. Staff also needs to put food on their tables, pay bills, and access to healthcare. These jobs are inaccessible to people who don't have a safety net. This is not a sustainable model for effective legislature, good for policymaking, and not only staff are affected, but this affects our constituents, too. Providing year-round staffing would allow a greater diversity of people to work at the legislature and better serve all Oregonians. Year-round jobs attract and retain experienced personnel, ensuring stability, continuity, and institutional knowledge in the legislature to better serve Oregonians. Having full-time staff also ensures that staff can take needed time off, allowing them to avoid burnout and stay longer at the legislature. Adequate year-round staffing ensures that we can better serve all Oregonians. Thank you so much for listening today, and thank you to all the staff at the state capital.
Thank you so much. Representative, good morning.
Good morning, Representative. Good morning, Missing Co-Chair Gorsuch and Missing Co-Chair Greg Smith.
At long, long last, the House is in charge of this budget.
Understood. So for the record, my name is Travis Nelson, and I represent House District 44, north and northeast Portland. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I want to begin by acknowledging the important work of all the staff in this building who make this institution run, from the committee staff, to the LAs, to the chiefs of staff, and everyone who supports our collective work behind the scenes. As a part-time professional legislator, most members must balance this role with outside employment like I do. During the interim, that balance means I rely heavily on my one staff member to keep constituent services running and to track complex policy developments in advance of session. My particular district is one of high engagement with active constituents, neighborhood leaders, and issue-focused stakeholders regularly reaching out. That's a great thing, but it comes with real-world workload implications. Currently, my staff is staffed by a chief of staff who is near the top of the pay scale. She is deeply experienced, capable, and a tremendous asset for the office. However, because of that very experience, she is expected to do more with less. This is a structure that punishes competence. It's not just unsustainable, it's fundamentally unfair. Additionally, retaining a legislative assistant year-round is critical to maintaining the capacity needed to serve our constituents effectively, ensuring continuity between sessions, and build the expertise required to meet the growing demands in our district. I support the staff in this building, and I know the vast majority of my colleagues do as well. We want to retain and empower talent, not burn it out. We want to serve our constituents effectively, not just during session, but year-round. So I'm not here today to make demands, but to ask for partnership in addressing this problem. I'm here to ask legislative leadership in this committee to work with staff and members to find solutions that adequately staff member offices so we can better serve our constituents. That's why, a big part of why we're here after all. We talk often in this building about supporting workers, but that commitment must extend to the people who work inside these walls and to the staff who carry the weight of our offices year-round, 365 days a week, because our district's needs do not end with signee die. If we're serious about public service, then we need to be serious about staffing as a matter of democratic function. Thank you for your time, and I welcome the opportunity to stay in dialogue as this conversation continues.
Thank you both so very much. So here's where we're at, everybody. We need to hear from Legislative Council and the Legislative Policy and Research Office before we finish our hearing today. But I note that there are a number of people that have come here to testify. And so what I'd like to do is I would like to hold Council and El Pro over until the top of the hour at 9 o'clock, and I want to see if we can get through as much testimony as possible between now and then. I thank you both for your testimony this morning. I am mindful of the fact that nearly 10% of the House and Senate has appeared here this morning to advocate for their staff and for this addition to the budget. I see a lot of other people here in the room, and a lot of them appear to me to be legislative staff, so I'm very concerned that if we don't hear from them quickly, the work of the legislature is going to grind to a halt this morning. So what I'd like to do is I've got eight people who are signed up. Thank you both very much.
Happy International Workers' Day today. Today's May Day.
Thank you. I'm going to, I've got eight people that are signed up, and there may be additional people that want to testify. So I'm going to start at the top of the sign-in sheet and call Andrew Hall and Caleb Hayes up. And we'd like you to be respectful of the folks that are in line behind you. I know that a lot's been said, but not everybody's had a chance to say it yet. So we'd be very pleased to hear from the two of you next.
Thank you. Representative Gamba, members of the committee, my name is Andrew Hall, and I'm the LA-2 for Representative Anderson, though I am speaking for myself, not my boss. While I do not speak for him, I love working for him. I've learned a lot in this job, and I have come to love and respect the work that we do here. But I've also found that every time I get the hang of one aspect of my job, it's time to move on to the next thing. I want to keep working here. In the last two years, my FTE has changed seven times. During this time, I have worked for two separate offices. For a few months, I worked three jobs, two in the legislature and one outside of it. The constant uncertainty about employment takes a mental toll. But in addition, this is just not an effective way to run a government. Every time that I have started a new position, in or out of the legislature, I've needed time to learn the ropes. Every time that my FTE has changed, I've needed time to learn or relearn the tasks that I'm taking on, or train someone else to do a task that the office no longer has the budget to assign to me. The staffing level and constant staffing changes have real costs for the effectiveness of the body and for the people of Oregon. Onboarding and training are expensive, both directly and indirectly. Additionally, every district is different, and many would be more effective with more consistent staffing. Constituents still need help after signee die. I started this testimony by emphasizing that I love my job and the work we do here, and I want to reiterate that. I understand that the budget is incredibly difficult this cycle, and I am not envious of the position you are in. But I don't just love the legislature for what it is, I love what it could be. With the option for more consistent staffing, we could take more time to craft stronger legislation, respond to the ever-growing needs of constituents, and retain the institutional knowledge. Let's work together to build a legislature that works for every Oregonian and build stronger, smarter legislation while delivering for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hayes, good morning.
Good morning. Co-Chair Gamba, perhaps, and members of the committee. My name is Caleb Hayes. I'm the chief of staff for State Representative Zach Hudson, and have served as chief of staff to multiple legislators over five years. I'm testifying on behalf of myself and my colleagues today. As chief, I have cut my hours back, sometimes for nearly a year at a time, up to half my normal hours, to keep other staff onboard. Even then, we can only keep them at reduced hours. They deserve to keep their jobs, and I would promote them if I could. And yes, I could run the office as recommended, firing and rehiring several staff, firing and rehiring staff several months later, over and over again. But how is that fair to anyone, particularly the LA-2 who does an impressive job? What does it mean for constituent service and having continuity in that area? How does it affect policymaking and agency oversight? I'll expand. How is it fair to the LA-2 who does good work? It's not fair at all, and it creates a dynamic where they always have to be looking for other work. What does it mean for constituent service? It means less continuity and slower response times for constituents in need. Our LA-2, Spencer, has served several constituents, and he's saved them from eviction and other serious issues. Without him onboard, I am certain I wouldn't have the bandwidth to build the relationships, follow up, and help them in the ways he has. On policymaking and agency oversight, without a year-round LA-2, I cannot assist my boss in these areas the way I should. Agencies put massive fiscal notes on our bills, and we would like to provide closer oversight on the growth of agencies and their programs. Unfortunately, our current staffing budget makes this task impossible considering our other duties. Remember, LA-4s must take on the LA-2 duties when no LA-2 is on staff. Moreover, some LA-2s are more than capable of taking on important policy work. I have seen it done. Without them, they cannot help in that regard either. The state has many funding priorities this session. I understand that. However, this ask is for the legislative branch, which oversees agencies and their programmatic work. In other words, if we fund this ask, the legislature will have more capacity to hold agencies accountable and right-size their budget requests. Funding year-round LA-2 staffing will lead to better constituent service, a fair employment situation for us, and real government accountability that will save the state money.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to invite Erin Meacham and Jessica Snook.
Thank you, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Erin Meehan, for the record, and I am a constituent of Gresham, Oregon. Actually, Senator Gorsuch and Representative Hudson are my local legislators. And I just wanted to share a bit about my journey through this. I am not an administrative assistant. I am not a legislative assistant. I am a constituent, and I've done a lot of work advocating for affordable housing in this space here. And I've done some trainings. I've done some fellowship, leadership development training and whatnot. And some of your staff members have been part of that journey for me and done a really great job sharing their information, their ideas, and building on things that I'm working on for my own goals in housing, affordable housing for all. So I just would like to really emphasize and support, and urge you to support the help that is needed to make this government here in Oregon work. First-hand experience that the people that are working here have worked for me and others in my district. So I appreciate them, and I appreciate the need for them to be there full-time and have the right pay and be treated as the awesome employees and wonderful work that they do. So please, I do urge you to support supporting this bill, and I thank you for your time and service.
Thank you so very much for being with us today. We'll hear from Jessica Snook, and I'm going to also invite Megan Y to come up. Please.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Acting Chair Gomberg and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Jessica Snook, and I serve as the LA4 for Representative Lucetta Elmer. I'm here today testifying in my personal capacity. I've had the pleasure of working in the legislature in various capacities since 2017, only having missed two special sessions and at one point being on three offices' payroll in interim. In the interest of time, I'll submit additional comments and written testimony. I'm grateful that Oregon is a citizen's legislature, and I'm not advocating for that to change. How I grew up, bureaucracy was a bad word. Trust is much easier to lose than it is to earn. I can confidently say that there's a massive trust deficit among many throughout the state, and I don't believe this is a single-party issue. Some constituents turn to government as an absolute last resort in the 11th hour of a personal crisis. Had there been trust in government, I believe in many of these cases there would have been outreach for assistance sooner, preventing the situation from escalating to the level of a crisis. Consistency of staffing allows for trust and rapport to be built with constituents, community leaders, and local organizations. After redistricting, even the most tenured legislators had shifting boundaries that resulted in getting to know new communities and new constituents, where there was or may still be a period of needing to rebuild or to build that trust. I'll always remember answering the phone in an office towards the beginning of my legislative career and having a constituent incredibly upset about what was likely a water issue. While I could barely get a word in, when the constituent finally took a breath, I tried to both sympathize and empathize with them, and I was quickly met with a harsh, "You live in Portland, you don't understand." When I informed them that I currently did not and nor have I ever lived in Portland, and I actually was born and raised in southern Oregon, two hours away from the district that I was working for and that that person lived in, there was a genuine pause. The constituent then said in a much more mild-mannered tone, "Well, that's still not my town, but it's better than Portland." We then proceeded to have a two-way discussion about the issue that they were having, not just a one-way conversation. To start from scratch, every session, as an LA2 learning in a new district, a new committee assignments, or as the chief of staff, to need to impart all of that knowledge on an LA2 you're tasked with training, while also maintaining the other duties of an office is a significant time investment. Our LA2s are worth investing that time and energy into, and there's a direct benefit to the people we serve by doing that. As a strong fiscal conservative, I'd not be sitting before you today respectfully requesting that the committee evaluate staffing levels to better represent and assist constituents within the districts we serve if I didn't believe there was an avenue to increase government efficiency, accountability, and trust by doing so. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration this morning.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Good morning.
Good morning, Acting Chair Gomberg. For the record, my name is Megan Wei. I am Chief of Staff for the Office of Senate District 10, and I am also here today in my personal capacity to urge the inclusion of funding for adequate staffing in the legislature's budget. Legislative staff face intense workloads, both during sessions and in the interims. The current system, which provides for LA2 positions only during session, creates serious capacity challenges for legislative offices, and it places immense stress on staff. While interims may once have been a slower time of year when staff could take things easier, this is no longer true. Interims are now periods when chiefs take on intense constituent services and policy development workloads without the help of supportive staff. In 2024, the legislative office that I work for fielded 188 constituent services cases with people asking for our help. Of those, 164 occurred during the interim between sessions when our budget does not provide for an LA2. That is an average of 18 constituent services cases per month, many of which involve individuals with very acute or very complex needs. During the same period, my member also served on 11 different task forces, work groups, and commissions related to her work as a state senator, each of which requires staff capacity to track. My member also drafted 72 personal bills and 16 committee bills this interim, which, due to drafting deadlines, mostly have to be developed before we hired our LA2 in mid-November. This is data from just one office, but I believe it is similar to the workloads that many offices face during interims. All of this amounts to an immense workload being placed on one person who is simultaneously absorbing all of the administrative and outreach work that would be handled by supportive staff during the session. During this past interim, at least two constituents reached out to me personally to express disappointment regarding slow responses to their emails, and I completely understand their frustration. While I try to maintain excellent customer service, some tasks can fall through the cracks when staff are overwhelmed. If I had had an LA2 in our office, we would have been able to answer their questions in a much more timely manner. In closing, understaffing in legislative offices is bad for Oregonians and bad for staff. Please support funding for adequate staffing, please support funding for adequate staffing levels in House Bill 5016 to support effective, responsive, and efficient public service. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I see Representative Neuron is with us today, and I'm going to invite her to come forward if she wanted to testify. And as she's making her way up, the other people I have signed up are Nathan Stoltz, Robert Greenway, Ryan Moore, and Selena Blick. Are there others here who had hoped to testify today? I'm just trying to get a count or a sense of our morning. All right, we're in good shape. Good morning, Representative. We're pleased to hear from you today.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Courtney Neuron, State Representative for House District 26. It's good to see you, Acting Chair Gomberg, and members of the committee. And this is a little bit of an impromptu for me, so I often am much more scripted and planned, but I think what I really want to share today, and I'm sure that the voices of those you've heard from already have uplifted what we're advocating for here, what I really want to share is the importance of having adequate staffing to do our jobs well, and that is from a legislative perspective, but I also hear that from our staff. They want to do their jobs well as well, and we hear so often about the challenges that we face to really make sure that we're delivering for our constituents in Oregon. Our legislative offices are the front line of government for many of our constituents, and we respond to the urgent needs navigating complex systems and helping community members engage in policymaking processes. The volume and complexity of this work, as we know, continues to grow, and it is only with adequate staffing that we can ensure that every constituent is heard and served with care. Policy development, too, of course, depends on skilled staff, and crafting legislation requires time-consuming research, engagement with stakeholders, and careful drafting. And we all want those bills where people come to testify and say there's been a great process. However, interim staffing levels often fail to reflect the year-round nature of this work due to the lack of funding for year-round legislative assistance. Our work shifts during interim from navigating the intensity of session to outreach, tours, policy creation, task force work, work groups. Those of us who have other jobs as well, in order to afford to serve as legislators, might also rely more heavily on staff to be our ambassadors in the community during interim. So the work doesn't stop, and without full-time staff support during interim, our chiefs of staff are, and two full-time staff, I mean by that, are forced to juggle, our chiefs of staff are forced to juggle policy, administration, scheduling, and communications, leading to burnout and undermining the quality of service we provide. It's one of my hopes that we have staff that feel like they're able to work at the top of their skill sets, and we know that sometimes people are building skills along the way. And having to juggle the changing nature of a job during interim is incredibly challenging for our chiefs of staff especially, and then those who are hired and then let go, or hired only for five weeks out of a year, and then needing to move on. It's not a sustainable pathway to successful policymaking and building those skills, especially within an office, because we know we like to spend time training and building a team. Structural issues as well with the services and supplies budget are straining our capacity. So I'll just name that offices are often forced to choose between retaining experienced staff and maintaining basic functionality. Long-term staff have to forego vacation time sometimes due to a lack of support coverage. Bilingual employees or those with advanced skills don't always feel that they're able to be compensated in a way. There's kind of a strange incentive to have a dynamic where you can have two staff, and if you have a very capable staff, you're not going to be able to afford the support that that person would need to, again, work at the top of their skill set. Members serving as committee chairs or vice chairs also have additional roles and responsibilities in the building, and staff shoulder significantly increased workloads in support of that. Without additional staff support, it makes it harder for us to perform in critical leadership roles. So I really want to just emphasize my view as a legislator, but really hope that you hear the words of our staff who have offered phenomenal written testimony as well, to just really illustrate what we are experiencing and why we believe that there needs to be adequate levels to have buffers on the, at the very minimum, buffers on either side of our session so that we can train up and wind down. But throughout session and throughout interim, making sure that we're able to perform and deliver for the constituents of Oregon is one of my goals and the goals of our high-performing and really qualified and passionate staff who you're hearing from today. So thank you.
Thank you so very much. All right, I'm going to call Nathan Stoltz and Robert Greenway, please. And I'll also invite Ryan, excuse me, Selena Blick to come up, please.
Thank you, Chair Protem Gomberg and House members of the committee. For the record, I'm Nathan Stoltz. Many of you may know me in various capacities, but today I'm here representing the Legislative Staffers Union, IBW Local 89, and speaking as a legislative assistant in his 10th session working in this building. My first session here was 2016 with Senator Allen Bates. After his passing, I joined Senator Frederick's office in 2017, where I stayed until the 2019 interim, when I became Senator Golden's part-time and district legislative aide, before turning as Senator Frederick's chief at the end of that year. And while I am not alone in my tenure here, there are very few of us who can claim to be in the double digits. The constant turnover of staff in this building is certainly no secret. There are all sorts of anecdotes as to why this is, but it really boils down to one thing: burnout. For as long as I've been here, there's been a well-known issue, and there have been various causes for it, but in recent years, certainly during and post-pandemic, staffing levels are undoubtedly a major aggravating factor. The workloads of our offices serving our districts have increased exponentially. There used to be a slow season to this work. Now, our workloads go from unruly in the interim to cataclysmic during the session, and in a certain respect, that's a good thing. Our legislature's work has become more professional, more technical, more careful. Constituents know that they can come to us with their concerns, and we will do our best to help them. The people's work no longer just takes place in the people's building, and I believe and I know that our state and our constituents are better off because of it, but it comes at a cost on a human level. For the first time, and I do not know how long, I'm taking a few days off at the end of May for some travel. Employee services told me that I accumulate about 11 hours of vacation time every month. I am maxed out at 350 hours, almost 32 months' worth of accumulation. They told me I should consider taking a payout. Since I'm six months out for my wedding, that sounds like a wonderful idea. Unfortunately, I can only take that payout if there's room for it and our office's budget, and since all of our budget goes to keeping on a much-needed part-time, sanctioned assistant, I'll just have to keep losing those hours. Now, I and my colleagues know that all of you are deeply appreciative of us for the indispensable role that legislative staff have in making all this work happen, and we love the work that we do, but that work cannot be done alone. I have not met a constituent yet who has not been absolutely shocked to learn about the staffing structure of their capital, where 18 out of every 24 months, each one of you is supposed to do your work with only one of us. Some offices get creative. We use every last cent of our budget to have a second aide on during the interim, even if just a few hours a week, and we do it at the expense of having no budget left over for anything else, and any sort of official travel or outreach has to be covered by the member elsewhere. It is not unusual for offices to ask their neighbors for printer paper, staples, Kleenex, because that is the trade-off for trying to attain something resembling manageable staff workloads. You might say, "Nathan, sounds like you should take some more vacation." Well, at this point, it might go without saying, but with only one full-time staff, taking time off means that I'm going to come back to more work, angry constituents, and an email inbox that barely loads because of its size. The status quo is not working. I would say it's not sustainable, but it's already not being sustained. We are asking for something very simple: staffing resources to meet the demands of this modern legislature. If not now, if not in House Bill 5016, then at least a promise that it is something that we can work on together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stoltz, I notice in the roster here, for some reason, you're listed as opposition. You might want to follow up on that, because it certainly sounds like you're supportive here.
It was opposed unless we get an amendment, I suppose.
Very good. Well, thank you for your testimony. Congratulations on your upcoming wedding. I hope you take some of that vacation time at some point in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And is Robert Greenway with us? Apparently not, so I'll hear from Selena Blick.
Acting Chair Gomberg and members of the committee, for the record, my name is Selena Blick, and I am currently a legislative assistant for House District 5, but I'm testifying today in my personal capacity. I say "currently" because I have no idea how much longer I will be able to stay employed at the legislature under the current staffing structure. My colleagues asked me to testify today because I am one of the few legislative assistants who has managed to return to work here for more than one session. It is sad that this is an anomaly. I started at the legislature in January of 2024, having lots of experience that translated to this work, but no experience in the legislature or even with campaigns. I took the job thinking that it would be a good stepping stone to something else, because what else could a six-week job possibly be? Unfortunately for my financial stability, I fell in love with this work and fought to find a way to come back. I managed to piece together some gig work and got on Medicaid during the interim to make ends meet. Then, at the end of August, I got a call asking me to immediately come work for a different office because their chief of staff was dealing with a family emergency and the inbox was completely underwater. Luckily, I said yes, because I later learned that I was the only person that HMO could recommend with the experience and availability to jump right in. The nature of the legislature is that there is always going to be change and turnover among members and leadership, but this is all the more reason to ensure that we have consistent and stable staffing to maintain institutional knowledge and enable legislators and staff to do their best work for Oregonians. Having no flexibility for chiefs to take time off during the interim is not sustainable. Using limited time and resources to interview, hire, onboard, and train new LAs every year is not efficient. Burdening chiefs with scheduling and constituent work during the interim is not effective for good policy development. Instead, creating a stable staffing structure would benefit legislators and their constituents by enabling staff to show up for their district year after year with experience and time and compassion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so very much for your testimony. The final person I have preregistered is Ryan Moore.
Thank you, Acting Chair, members of the committee. I'm Ryan Moore. I work for Representative Gomberg, but I'm here as a member of our Legislative Staff Union. Like many of us, I am not used to public speaking, so sorry for the nerves. I'm also of the mind that if we do our jobs well, we're invisible and not front and center. So happy International Workers' Day. It's poetic to be here with our staff union. I'm going to be brief, but I do have some important historical context that is relevant to this discussion. I was on our staff union's bargaining team during the last round of contract negotiations, which ended literally just before this session began, and I've been involved in our union since 2021. Staffing levels was one of the core reasons our union even came together back in 2021. And if there is anything you take away from my comments today, I hope it's that we have been voicing this need for years now. It's not new, and it is getting more urgent as the years go by. Our union has now been through two bargaining cycles. In both of them, our unsustainable staffing structure has been one of the very top items of discussion. We've brought many creative ideas and possible compromises to the table. Our goal here is to be a partner with management on this, and we share the goals with all of you of delivering the best constituent service, the best policymaking, and the most effective governance possible. Our members do not work these jobs for the money. We are passionate- We are passionate about serving Oregonians. Our union has been working towards solutions for our unsustainable staffing structure for years. We've been told that Ways and Means is the place that we can have that discussion properly, and that's why we're here. So, thanks for hearing us, and I hope you have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you so very much.
Can I ask a question?
Please, Representative.
Thank you. What have you asked for in a compromise from management that you've received on this issue?
I don't want to put anyone in a bad light, but I'd be happy to follow up later.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Those are the people that I have preregistered to testify today. Was there anyone else here that had hoped to make a presentation? Well, let me say, first of all, again, that I am mindful that a full 10% of the, both House and Senate, has appeared here to testify in support of some staff changes. I very much appreciate all of you staff members that have come forward to share your perspective. You are a credit to your offices, to this institution, and to the state of Oregon, so I thank you for that and for your comments here today. Senator?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Protem. Co-chair. Well, he is the Protem, so.
Thank you, Protem. You're right. You're correct. As are you.
Well, I just want to say, you know, I'm happy that this conversation started, you know, and bringing out some of the important work that we elected officials here for representing the people are required to do, and the value that of our staff. It used to be I hear terms like we are a part-time legislature. That is not true, and is indicated by all of the testimonies by our colleagues coming up here. So, I am strongly in favor of this. I just want to put that on the record. And if I can get my good friend, Representative Ruski, you know, who is, he, what was that? Penny Pincher, what was that?
Tightwad.
Tightwad, yeah. Yeah. So, if we can get him on board and stuff, then we, this thing will go forward.
All right, well, thank you so much, Senator. And I know you'll be reviewing the excellent testimony that we've received this morning. I've now passed the gavel back to the actual co-chair of the committee, and thank you again. Yes, Representative Tran.
So, this is my first term on a subcommittee for Ways and Means. How do we amend something that wasn't asked for?
Mr. Turpin, perhaps?
Co-chair, member of the subcommittee, so amendments can be submitted by members. Amendments that are going to be worked are generally approved by the Ways and Means co-chairs. So, at the time of a work session, that amendment has been approved by the co-chairs to be included.
So, is there a form that needs to be filled out and submitted to the co-chairs?
You wouldn't, you would need to have LC draft the amendment and then submit it to the co-chairs, so there isn't a particular form that's sent to the co-chairs, just the amendment itself.
Because it involves fiscal, how would that aspect play in?
I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Because we're asking for money, so LC can draft and ask for funding? Also, would we have to get LFO involved in this?
Co-chair, remember, subcommittee, Representative Tran, LFO would be involved, because we're running the budgets through the subcommittee, but members can request amendments to bills here in Ways and Means, so.
Excuse me, co-chair, if I could just jump in here. If I'm understanding this conversation correctly, Representative Tran is suggesting, I think, if she just simply offered an amendment that said, "We want to provide an additional FTE in each office," it would then be up to legislative fiscal to determine the cost of that amendment. That Representative Tran wouldn't have to figure that out initially.
I think that's right. The challenge would be that these, these are appropriation bills, so they don't have the typical language, they just have dollar figures placed in them, so.
The other thing I would tell you, Rep. Tran, is that myself and my co-chair meet with the bigger chairs on a weekly basis, and I'm certainly interested in bringing this to them and telling them of the desire of at least some of the committee members to do that, and then hopefully they can also provide some direction.
So, Chair, co-chair, so in addition to your conversation, it will be more effective if I submit something in writing and request an amendment to this?
What do you think?
I think that would be.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. And in conclusion of this particular item, 5016 is important for the overall operation of the branch, but I'm also very supportive of the testimony. I know I was in another committee, but, you know, in general, I've been involved in these discussions for a while, and I'm very supportive of this. I think there's a bit of awkwardness, because we're legislators talking about the legislative branch, and so it's a little odd. In my other, the other committee I was just in, we were talking about employee relations that weren't being carried about by some public entities, and so that's, again, a little bit unusual. So, it's been an interesting morning. So, I apologize that I had to step away for a couple of bills, but I think this is a very, very important issue, and we need to, we have, we need to have more dialogue in terms of this. So, thank you to everyone who has come and taken time out of their morning to talk to us about all of this. It's very, very important. I'm going to go ahead and close.
You don't have to do that.
Oh.
Because we're still, we're still in public hearing, so just.
Oh, okay. All right, so now, if we could have Mr. Dexter Johnson come on up, and we'll talk about more with Legislative Council. Welcome, sir.
Co-chair, Gorsuch, members, good morning. I'm Dexter Johnson, Legislative Council. You all recall, you heard from me yesterday and went through kind of a high-level overview of the functions of the office and a little bit more of a deep dive into the workload statistics for the office. That's where we left things, and I know we are pressed for time here, so I'm going to leap into my next topic, unless there are questions, and I'm not seeing any. So, that is our key performance measures. And like the other legislative service agencies that you have heard from and will hear from, we, our primary key performance measure is the customer satisfaction survey that legislative administration puts forth annually. And I'm happy to report, we have, we met our goal, actually, at 100% of survey respondents' answer that they, that our work was either excellent or good, which is our threshold. We also participate, have the Gold Star Certificate, KPM. That is a certificate that the State Controller awards to agencies that provide accurate and timely financial reporting to them. We have satisfied that criteria for the past four years, and actually, we have for a number of years after that, but so that one is met. And let me, this gives you a sense of our, historically, what our KPM results are, and while they have gone up and down, our 24 results are this red line at the top here. We have historically had at least 95% success in meeting our KPMs. As some other folks have testified, the one downside of the customer satisfaction survey is that there is not a lot of participation. And as you'll recall from yesterday, excuse me, yesterday's testimony, during the six months preceding a long session, we do work for state agencies as well. So, we decided back in '23 to provide the same survey to state agencies, and this is our result. That survey, again, largely positive, it's not quite 100%, but the green bars are the 23 results, and then the red line is the 24 results on that. So, that is our KPM picture, and with that, I'm going to jump to our goals and challenges.
Go back to the previous slide. So, why is the red line for knowledge, expertise, and overall quality dropped since 2023? Can you explain that?
I can't explain, that is the survey outcome. I don't know the reasons why it contrasts, of course, with the, those same questions answered by the legislative branch, and there was no drop there. So, I'm not certain why there was that result. Perhaps it might be because in 2024, we, the agencies only, only the governor's office and the judicial branch can request bills, and only five bills each for the short session. So, perhaps the responses were because we didn't do any work for agencies during the time when the survey was asked, and so we'll see if that's a trend over the years.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so I'll move on to our goals and challenges, and the first three bullets are essentially, you know, we've talked about the work that Legislative Council does and the need for, for you to succeed, for Legislative Council to be able to produce very high-quality work and an enormous quantity of that work in very short timeframes. And the, I think the key message that I want to leave with you is that the only way that we are able to do that is if there is robust staffing at LC and if we are able to maintain a largely experienced staff that can provide the expert guidance to you that you ask of us in the timeframes that you ask of us.
Yes, Representative Reschke.
Thank you, Mr. Co-chair, and good morning. So, on that, what has been the turnover rate in Legislative Council, say, in the last two or four years? Because I can see where turnover might be problematic, is you staff somebody up, you train them, they're efficient, and then they leave, you have to backfill. I'm just wondering what the, what the inflow-outflow rate is in your department.
Co-chair and Representative Reschke, that is a great question, and on balance, generally, we have a fairly long-term staff. People who join Legislative Council tend to stay for their career. I believe the average tenure of all employees at Legislative Council is a little bit more than 10 years, so fairly long-term. But there was a trend, there has been a trend, and it's going to lead into my policy option package, but there has been a trend. Recently, we lost two excellent attorneys to other employers, one of them the Department of Justice, another one went into the private sector, but this was largely driven by compensation, particularly the move to the Department of Justice. And so, as, well, I'll speak more about that when we get to the policy option package.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Co-chair.
Senator Manning?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, thank you so much. I am certainly a big fan of yours and your team. Just wondering, what is, what is the workload of this session here? I know there's been an enormous amount of requests that have been put on you and your staff, so the average, what does one attorney do? What does that look like? Does it look like 50 or, and then we get the amendments that follows?
Mr. Chair, Senator Manning, the average bill drafts is around, we have 21 attorneys on staff, the average number of bill drafts is around 270 to 300 per attorney. And that also includes, does not include the amendments. The amendments will follow the bills. Whoever drafted the bill will prepare the amendments, but it does include opinions and research requests and things like that.
Yes, second follow-up. That was the next part, the research and stuff, you know, I'm assuming that a lot of time, that takes up a lot of time, you know, to do research, looking at current law and laws that may exist in other states, comparable laws and things like that. So, an average for 200 to 300, that seemed like a lot, lot of time consumption.
Co-chair and Senator Manning, first of all, your observation is correct, that my experience is that opinions and research requests are actually both more intellectually challenging and more time-consuming than preparing drafts and amendments. Typically, we, in a two-year cycle, we prepare around 300 or so opinions, so.
Thank you. It's a lot of work.
So, that's my main message to you, and that's the first three bullets can reflect that. The fourth bullet is certainly also related to that. We can only do our work if we have robust IT technology, and a number of years ago, we began a joint project with legislative administration to upgrade our existing system, which is quite robust but exceptionally old, way out of service life. And so, we began that process. We had hoped to have that completed so that we would be using it for the 2025 session, that the project is still on track, but it has moved slower than we anticipate, so it is still in the development phase. We currently expect to be able to use the new software in parallel with the existing software in 2026 to make sure that everything is functional and will do the work that we will ask of it, and then we anticipate, we expect, and certainly hope that by 2027, we will be relying on the new software exclusively. So, with that, I'm going to move to a big picture of our existing current service-level budget, and as you can see, we are primarily a general fund-funded agency, and most of our budget goes to personal services. That's 89, 90% of our budget is compensation and related expenses. We do have two small other funds, those are related to the publications that I described to you yesterday, and our publications are self-funding, they, we charge at cost what it costs to produce them, and they are kind of standalone. Presently, our, the current service level is $22,433,000 general fund is reflected there, and we have only one policy option package. That is, and to your point, Representative, the branch undertook a market compensation survey about this time last year, and the, it was done by an independent consultant, and they determined that the public's comparable public-sector jobs in Oregon to what we have in Legislative Council were underfunded, and this policy option package brings us up to the same level as similar public-sector employers.
Yes, Representative Reschke?
Thank you, Mr. Co-chair. So, I might be getting the dates wrong, but I think recently, your department put in a new software package or way of generating the bills that your office cranks out. Am I remembering that correctly? And I'm just wondering how that's helped or hindered productivity in that transition.
Co-chair and Representative, actually, that's the program. Co-Chair and Representative, actually, that's the program I just described. It has not been fully, it has not been implemented yet. It has moved a little bit slower than we anticipated, so it's still in the development stage.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's our policy option package. And that brings me to a close of my presentation. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay today.
Thank you.
And now, if we could have Oliver Joppers come up, we're going to talk about the Legislative Policy and Research Office. So welcome.
Co-Chair Gorsuch, members of the committee, for the record, I'm Oliver Joppers. I'm the Deputy Director for Policy Research and the Legislative Policy and Research Office, LPRO for short. This morning, I'm going to talk through kind of the workload that we support you all, both in session in the interim, quickly go through our KPMs and where we're at, and also talk about our budget request, our policy option package. Our director, Missy Mason-Freeman, unfortunately, is not here this morning. She's out on medical leave. The good news is she's doing well in returning when we expect her to return back to the office in several weeks. Before I jump into content, I just want to pick up on a couple of themes that I've been hearing this morning in this committee this week, and particularly this morning. One is adequate staffing, the need to have and be able to retain experienced, high-quality staff, challenging year-round workloads for you all in your offices, retaining the staff, being able to provide excellent services, sustainable workload, institutional knowledge, and policy development. Those are themes that hopefully, I'm going to move through the content fairly quickly, but those are themes that we see reflected in the work that we do every day to support the policy committees, to support the task forces, the work groups, and your work as legislators here in this institution. We have a corset of vision, mission, and values, and I just want to put that in front of you all. It really anchors our work and how we show up as nonpartisan professional staff each and every day here in the legislature. These principles guide how we train, develop our staff, and how we approach our work. So just want to put that out there. We reflect upon those, and it really has built a very strong culture in our office of nonpartisan professionalism. What does LPRO do? You all know our work pretty well, I would say, so I won't spend much time on this. Obviously, we staff the policy committees. We do public engagement, language access. You can see here, we have two of our ASL interpreters this morning in this meeting. And we also do research services. So we provide policy research, analysis, and development, which, again, a theme I've been hearing this morning, the need for doing that and today. Here's our organizational chart. I'll just quickly go through left to right. We have three deputy director positions. And then we have a team, a research team, which are our senior research analysts, our GIS data visualization analysts, and then our editor. We have our principal senior legislative analysts who support the policy committees, the task force, and work groups. And then we have our deputy director for administration, which is where you have the senior committee assistants. The committee assistants are front desk specialists. And then the session committee assistants for the policy committees, the revenue and the budget committees. And then to the right is our language access supervisor, and then our team of sign language specialists and spoken language specialists.
But I have a question for you. In terms of the GIS folks, are they also the ones that are responsible for all of like the district maps and everything that we see around the Capitol?
Chair Gorsuch, members of the committee, that is correct. We do produce all your district maps. We do custom maps, and you can see those as well. So yes.
One thing that I have a background in this, and one thing that has always puzzled me is why we don't do inset maps for the intensely concentrated districts. You know, if you look at my district, for instance, 25, it's maybe a little tiny square. And Portland is just filled with those. If we had an inset map, we could more clearly show all of those districts. And I'm just wondering if we've ever ever considered that.
Chair, Co-Chair Gorsuch, great question. I'm sure we have. We've looked at some inset maps, especially around the Portland metropolitan area, and we're happy to produce those and look further into those for specific districts where that makes sense.
That makes sense. It's it's just cosmetic, really, because when you look at some of the more rural districts, you know, very large presence, and it's just a it's just a map quirkiness on my part. But it'd be interesting if we could look at that more.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to jump right into committee services. Our legislative analysts and our committee assistants support the policy process through the committees. They work on summarizing measures and amendments. They revise on procedural matters, respond to member requests, analyze and track referred measures, develop work plans and agendas, and request amendments, along with fiscal and revenue impact statements that have been discussed. If you look, it's really the numbers that we're putting in front of this committee this morning is, again, to really demonstrate the workload that we see in our office. Sorry, there we go. In the 2024 Savison, we did 14 policy committees on the House, 11 on the Senate, and we helped support over 168 meetings and produced 300 SMSs. As the first chamber deadline this session, our team has produced over 1,500 staff measure summaries. And this is just after the first chamber deadline. If you look, and that's reflected on the right-hand side. And so again, just the volume and the time that it takes to produce those staff measure summaries to get the bills through the legislative committee process and keep it on, keep those measured on the way, it's a huge amount of work and undertaking. Thinking a little bit about the work that we have the opportunity to support in the interim, this past interim, we supported six legislative task forces who have met for 72 different meetings. Those meetings average two to three hours. So if you think about some of those of you who have sat on those legislative task force knows the time commitment it takes for you, and it also takes an enormous amount of time for us. We plan and prepare the meeting materials. We provide the policy research and expertise, and we assist with policy development recommendations and supporting the co-chairs in the task force work in preparing the reports. In the interest of time, I'll leave this slide with you all to take a look at. This is a list of the task forces that we staff this interim. Just call your attention again to things, the number of meetings, but I'll draw your attention to the right-hand side, which is the number of policy measures introduced as a result of the policy work, the development that came out of those task forces.
You know, we did a trip around the state. There were 13. Oh, there, okay, never mind. I didn't see it up there, so I was going to ask you. And by the way, may I say that the work that LPRO did on those was was excellent. And that included the difficulty of trying to record and to, you know, broadcast some of that stuff. So it was it was a great experience in terms of the the LPRO technical style.
Co-Chair Gorsuch, members of the committee, thank you. We did support, as you're describing, the Joint Transportation Committee statewide listening tour last year. I'll let those numbers speak for themselves. 13 committees, the number of individuals that showed up, that came out and testified, the roundtable discussions that you had with the business community and the local electors was really a phenomenal public engagement process. The other set of interim responsibilities, just quickly to touch upon legislative days, you all know what those are. Executive appointments are office. This interim has handled eight appointment rounds. We've prepared memos for 354 individuals and 130 boards and commissioners. So that happens pretty frequently. We also have staffed, which we've heard about this morning, work groups, dozens of work groups, as requested, to help you all with process, bringing those stakeholders together, working on complex technical issues, and then moving those those into introduce as measures for the legislative process when requested by your offices. We also did the New Member Academy, which is a full two-day training in November. And then we also did a chair, co-chair training and policy area open houses with our partners in legislative revenue, legislative fiscal, and LC. Lastly, in the even years, we do the committees that prepare the ballot measure information that goes out to the voters. Administrative services, our team of extraordinary committee assistants play a vital role in the day-to-day operations of our committees, posting agendas, managing the streaming and recording of meetings. They really are doing incredible work every day to making sure that the committees operate smoothly behind the scenes, and really, their work is essential. Couple of quick things I want to note, not necessarily directed or related to the committees. We had several of our committee assistants complete the CSG Leadership Excellence for Nonpartisan Staff. Again, professional development is really a core value of our office to make sure that we're training the future leaders in the legislature. We also put out an enormous amount of publications available on our website. Please, if you haven't taken a look, you can look for them. It's searchable, filterable by policy area, but they help us behind the scenes and make sure that they're polished, they're clean, they're accurate, and they're available for members and for the public. Lastly, for the last two legislative sessions, 2024 and 2025, we've trained 60 session assistants to make sure that the committees have the capacity that you all need. Research services, we spent the last couple of years building out the arm of the research office, specializing in research methods and working closely with our legislative analysts to really provide you all with the research support that you need. I'm not going to go in through the list of research services, but if you have questions about what we're able to provide, please reach out to me. Happy to have a conversation with you or your staff.
I do have one question about that. Do you also tie in with regional colleges and universities for research, or is it really just our people doing that?
Yeah. Co-Chair Gorsuch, members of the committee, that's most of what we do is in-house. We do do some contracted out research as directed by legislative measures. And then when we don't have expertise, our legislative analysts do work with academics and researchers out in the community, both at community colleges and universities for informational hearings that come into work groups and talk and bring their expertise to the conversation.
Yeah, that's, I think that is an awesome way to go because we have a lot of capacity. And so if we're not able to do it, the capacity is definitely there. And I know Portland State's POP Center and other things really do provide some good data for us.
Absolutely, Chair Gorsuch. We are frequently in contact with the population, research at PSU, absolutely. So what do the requests look like? What are you seeing out of their office this biennium? Just you can see, we do issue briefs, fact sheets, district maps, which we've talked about, interactive district maps, custom district maps, where you can see fire stations, urban growth boundaries within your districts. And we also produce memoranda. Those are when we get official requests from you all from your offices. We respond formally in writing. And then you can see, what are the kind of more, I think, frequent or high flyers in terms of the policy areas? Education, business, consumer protection, healthcare, which is the bubble chart to the right, and then general government that ebbs and flows. Last biennium was housing, for example, so it changes. But we're always making sure that we're up to date, and trying to bring that subject matter expertise into your conversations that you're having. In the interest of time, won't talk through the slide, but what I want to say is the takeaway for you all is we also are doing large, complex, and depth studies. These studies sometimes take hundreds of hours of our staff time that we're asked to do for a task force, for study bills. And we're also, again, our goal is always to bring complex data and information in a way that you all have with limited time to understand and to use and make that actionable in terms of making decision-making in the committee process and the legislative process. Language access services. In 2021, the legislature asked LPRO to create a language access team. So we now are able to provide American Sign Language and spoken interpretation services as well as translation services, written material, translation when requested by you all for your offices and members of the public. So let me offer you a little bit of stats in terms of that workload in our office. A key change in 2024 was instead of individuals out in the community having to request ASL, we now, by default, as you can see this morning in all the committee meetings, we provide ASL at all committees, revenue, budget, and policy. As a first chamber session deadline, approximately 1,000 committees have met, and we've been able to provide ASL services, which is a phenomenal number, to make sure that we're ensuring access for Oregon staff and hard-ahinging community. The chart on the right shows individual request. You may be wondering, why did it dip in 2024 and you see three? That is because that shift in 2024, offering ASL for all committee meetings, individuals out in the community no longer had to make individual requests. Spoken language, translation, and interpretation, we are now providing simultaneous live Spanish interpretation for a subset of policy committees during this session. We have been able to provide that for 116 meetings so far in 2025. Spoken language support, along with ASL, was also provided for the Joint Transportation Listening Tour and the Ways and Means Roadshow that just wrapped up on Friday in Clement Falls. On the right, you can see the number of individual requests broken down. These are for individual meetings with members, for consecutive interpretation, for meeting with your constituents, but also for communicating with your constituents, written translation materials as well. Languages, Russian, traditional Chinese, Mandarin, and Vietnamese, just to give you a few. Here are some of the documents and resources that I'll leave you with, so you can take a look at those when you have time. So as we expand and we provide more services as directed by the legislature, we wanted to have some additional KPMs. So in 2023, we asked for six new KPMs. You can see those listed. The five are for services and products, and the six is for nonpartisanship. We also have, similarly to the other nonpartisan offices, a standing set of performance measures. The good news is we're achieving the 90% target across all of these. We have one year of data for our new KPMs. Again, we're doing well, we're meeting the 90% threshold. We want to see that, monitor that over time, as I know you do as well, to make sure that we're providing the support and services that we're expected to do. Here is our policy option package budget request. A little bit of context, the workload has continued to increase from biennium to biennium, pre-COVID, during the pandemic, post-pandemic, for a number of reasons. Virtual, hybrid, just the workload of your offices, we're continuing to really see sustained high workloads, and so that's one of the drivers for our budget request. We've seen a heavy reliance on limited-duration staff. They're incredible individuals. We also have to recruit and retain that. And at the end of the session, in less than two months, seven of our limited-duration legislative analysts will not be with this office. And third, the ability to retain our incredible specialized experience, institutional knowledgeable staff, is really, I think, reflected in what we're asking for the 25, 27 biennium. What you see here on this slide is we're asking for two new positions. We're asking for a principal research analyst we currently do not have. This position will be tasked with managing large projects, overseeing multiple disciplinary teams across the office, and managing internal and contracted research studies. We're also asking for an administrative assistant specifically dedicated to language access team to handle the scheduling of all the ASL and the other related language service requests that we handle every week in session. The other positions that we're asking for really hinges on our ability to maintain the core services that you all have come to expect of our office. We're asking for three additional positions for committee services. A principal legislative analyst, which supports succession planning in their office, professional growth, and will help ensure long-term retention. Two legislative analysts to provide ongoing support for the committee's task forces and work groups throughout the year, and to maintain that subject matter expertise across the vast number of policy areas you all are working in. Again, I just want to reiterate, these three positions in committee services will hopefully partially offset the loss of seven limited-duration positions in two months. We're asking for one additional senior committee assistant to provide ongoing mentorship, particularly for the session-only committee assistants, and to support with interim projects, including work groups and task forces in the interim. And lastly, we're asking for an additional Spanish interpreter in response to the growing number of requests for both written translation into Spanish and actually consecutive and simultaneous requests for Spanish interpretation. I just want to acknowledge the incredible leadership team in LPRO. You see reflected here. They show up day in, day out, and do the incredible work, and this would not be possible without them. Co-Chair Gorsuch, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to share our work this morning. It's an honor to represent our professional, talented, trained, nonpartisan staff, and I'm honored, and we're all honored in our office, to support your the work that we do for the legislature and for Argonauts, and we appreciate your time and any questions you may have.
Well, not a question, but a comment. We could not do our work without LPRO, and LPRO does an excellent job in supporting all of us. The same is true of LFO staff. And so you really are the ones that make this building run. And you just make a